I have a question about the agenda.
We need to make a motion to approve it first and then you can bring that up.
Okay.
Point of order, Bill.
So moved.
You got it.
Okay. There a second? Derek over there is seconding with his green fingers. Thank you. You had a question, Bill?
Yes. I don't know where the proper place is to talk about this, but it's the thing of the agenda last month didn't really reflect what went on in the meeting. And then tonight's agenda, I'm trying, I think I have the same problem.
Tonight's meeting has nothing to do with last meeting because tonight's meeting is only professional development, essentially, or our large projects. So anything we did at last meeting will be, would have been tabled to May, our first meeting in May.
Okay, the principle is going to be the same in both meetings. In terms of the agenda really not reflecting what the content is.
Bill, last meeting, the agenda spoke to the equity policy and that was the bulk of the meeting, so.
Yes, I know, but look at the.
How did it not reflect?
Yeah.
Well, the trouble is I can't get the last month's agenda back on the web. And I don't know if you take them down every month, but it seems like we should get archived, but I couldn't find them.
They are, it's, it's, um, I'll shoot you a link. Do you want me to shoot you a link? It's, there's a webpage under our webpage, go to district information, school boards, Otter Valley. And the Otter Valley School Board page has a link to all agendas, documents and minutes. And it's archived up there for the past however many years.
Okay. Shoot me a link.
Sure.
Okay. Do we have anything you want to walk on to the agenda?
I think Natalie just posted it in the chat, the link. Sorry to interrupt you, Lori, it's just.
No, that's right. I just wanted to know if anybody needed, if Jean had anything she wanted to add to the agenda. No? I'm assuming no. Okay. Okay. Then at this point, all of those that accept the agenda as written, please signify by aye, pressing your green button or waving at me. Okay, looks like we've got an agenda. Thank you very much. Communications with parents, citizens and staff. Is there anyone here who would like to discuss something with us? That is not here to talk about facilities? Imagine that. No. Okay. And we haven't had any let's talk recently either to discuss. Consent agenda. Someone want to make a motion for consent agenda? Was there? I don't know why there's one on here.
Yeah, you don't usually do consent agenda in this meeting, but we're asking you to for the hiring of employees because we don't want them to take somebody else's contract.
Fair enough.
We want them to take ours.
So does someone want to make a motion for the consent agenda? Derek is saying yes. Barbara is saying she's second. All of those that approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye, waving at me, green button.
Aye.
Excellent. It is so moved. Okay. So our next piece of the puzzle is Task Force 2019 Summary and Review, which I believe that's why we have the wonderful Allison Popa with us tonight. So hi Allison. For those of you who don't know Allison Popa, she is a consultant to the school boards in the SU who helps us with communication and lots of other things. So Allison, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, yes. Great to see all of you. Allison, I've been working with the district since 2018. And I'm going to be walking you through some really great work that we did with the task force, so I'm excited. And yeah, I look forward to just providing any insights that I can.
Okay. So can you all see that?
Do you want to take questions as well or?
Very good question, Bill. It is our pref-, this is a very long presentation. It's a combination of Allison and Brenda and me. It is our preference that you allow us to finish at least a section, like task force section. Then you could, we can answer questions and then we'll do the facility section and answer questions. Otherwise, we're concerned that we won't make it through everything. So if you could take notes and ask questions by section, we would greatly appreciate that.
Oh, goodie. Is the chair going to time the sections? That's facetious. We do need to keep.
Right. Well, and I will add that obviously some of you are going to be much more familiar with this work than others. New board members may be seeing this stuff for the first time. So this is really, at least from what I'm going to be presenting, an abbreviated version of, you know, over almost two years' worth of work. So obviously there may be things that come up and we can take it offline, we can drive you to places to find more information, whatever will be helpful. But really, we're just trying to set up the stage for the facilities component. And so that you can understand some of the background work that the task force did.
Okay, so Allison, do you want to, I'll kind of be your, your helper here.
Yeah, that sounds great. So I just wanted to sort of take us back as to why the task force was sort of first presented. And, you know, some of that had to do with how Act 46 impacted the district, which sort of shifted, you know, now we have one governance board. Taxpayer, it's all equal parts within the six towns. It's a unified board versus individual boards. And then what we said is some of the opportunities as a result of that, you know, really gave us an opportunity to regroup on physical assets, buildings, grounds, overall debt, and also be able to utilize some of that staff and educators and the resources that may have been for one school when it was an individual school versus, you know, this unified approach. And so those are some of the opportunities that we identified as a task force. You can go next slide. So the task force was formed essentially to develop a plan as a result of, you know, people in the community, families saying, look, we'd like to try to avoid, you know, big decisions being made and have some foresight into that. And so the board said, okay, how do we sort of develop a plan? Or some form of a plan that will help people sort of evolve as the district evolves to support families, students and the community into response, you know, to any federal mandates, legislative changes and budgetary prioritization. And essentially, we wanted to ensure high quality equitable academic opportunities, be good stewards of school finance, obviously, and lead our communities through change. You can go next slide. Maybe, right? And, you know, as a group, when we were talking, we sort of said, okay, most importantly, we really want to be sensitive to families who experienced, you know, experienced any school disruption, placement disruption due to Act 46 and district consolidation. We really want to maximize facilities and minimize cost. You know, looking at big picture, how do we break down each school? And those costs involved with each school and really maximize that to benefit students and families. We really wanted to keep schools safe and functioning at highest capacity. And where that comes in is, you know, sometimes maintenance has to be, maintenance has to be put, some maintenance has to be put, you know, or reprioritized based on needs. And so we really wanted to take a deep dive into, into, you know, keeping our schools safe and functioning, which obviously Brenda and everybody does an amazing job at. Listening to community input to help drive decision making and then, you know, being committed to keeping small schools open if possible in the face of declining enrollment, which you'll, you'll see later on in the presentation. So who was the task force? It was comprised of five board members and four community members. I wanted to sort of give you the names. Some of these faces are going to be familiar. And there really was sort of a representation of each of the towns. You know, Greg was Lester, Lisa Kenyon represented from Brandon, Mark was also Lester. Naomi was Pittsburgh, Jay, Brandon. Martin was from Goshen. Lori is Sudbury, Barbara is Brandon, and then we have Barry from Brandon as well. This group was an amazing dedicated group. I really, I said to Jean as I was looking through the work that we did, it was just, it was a really productive group and they all worked very hard to make sure that we landed in a good place. Next slide. I know, smiley bunch, that's right. So what did the task force, what were they really tasked with? And it was really a combination of both programs and facilities with a focus on the future of the district and really trying to figure out how we make the district, you know, run as efficiently as possible, but also, you know, keep it competitive, you know, with declining enrollment, with people moving out of state. How do we keep people here and also how do we attract new families as well? And then they were integral in determining how to connect the community regarding triggers, which we will talk more in a bit, but like I said before, legislative changes, declining enrollment, things that are happening in real time, how do we, how do we sort of keep the community informed and keep them apprised of any changes coming down the pike as much as possible? Next slide. And at the heart of really everything the task force did, they really took it upon themselves to say, okay, the root of what we're doing is really to provide a high quality equitable education to all OVU students at the most effective cost. And we checked most things that we did against this. Barry was very good at holding us accountable to this statement, if I remember, so. You can go to the next slide. And I just wanted, I know there's a ton of talk on equity even lately. This is how we defined it. We focused on equity by ensuring that all students have access to opportunities and skills that will allow them to be successful as they enter into OVUHS. And where that comes about is some of the smaller schools may not have is a vivacious music program as others. So some students are coming in, can read music, but some can't. And so now they're entering high school and the ones that can read music, obviously are going to have a better opportunity at making the high school band or, you know, just, so those are some of the conversations that we had as a group as far as making sure that all students entering high school were sort of entering on the same, on the same playing field. So lots of data. Again, I thought it maybe best just provide a snapshot overview. I'm going to dive into some of the data a little bit. And this is where I say, obviously, we can get you additional information if you, if you prefer. I'm a data heavy person, so, you know, but I'm just going to provide an overview and then, you know, we can, whatever you need offline, obviously, we can get. But if I counted correctly, it was 28 meetings from January 2018 to May 2019. And I'm not talking like one hour meetings, I'm talking sometimes four hour meetings. It was intensive. And there was a lot that was discussed. The, the group took a deep dive into data, district data, triggers, landscape. I believe was, it was like 93 pages worth of data that Jean compiled for the group to review. And most people came to meetings with their binder. Mark, I remember Mark, I mean, he could just flip through to the exact page that we were discussing and be able to reference the data to, you know, and Angela too. I know Angela is a big data person. But we also did a community survey and I was sort of looking back at that so I could provide a snapshot. So there were 516 completed responses, which really was an amazing feat. People really hit the ground and we did a lot of work to get that number. And as you'll see in the next few slides, it was representative really by percentage to how people comprise the six towns within, you know, population to percentage of, of surveys completed. We sort of joked, Martin in Goshen literally went and knocked on doors and, you know, got, got most of his neighbors to complete the survey to kick those numbers up a little bit. But it really looked at like the town you were from, do you have children in the district? Are you aware of legislative changes? Do you make budget decisions based on tax dollars? You know, programs that you want to see more or less of? What change would you be most open to, you know, consolidated elementary versus a middle school model versus, you know, keeping the district as is, those sorts of questions? And then it was really just followed up by, would you be willing to participate in a focus group? And we had quite a few people from the community that volunteered to do that too. Which brings me to the next bullet. So we did a community focus group. And that was follow up to the survey to dig into some of the questions that people had and just, you know, understand what people are really looking for from, from the board and from the district. And then lastly, we did a working group where we discussed, so from the survey and the community focus group, we then looked at all of that and I'll talk to this in a little bit, but like looked at change versus no change. What, you know, what are some of the ideas that came from that? And then we put together, you know, sort of buckets of ideas and then we pulled in community members in a working group and they literally sat down and went through all of these ideas and sort of talked about what, what was plausible? What, what, what do they see would be useful and not useful? And then from that, that's what we used to develop the recommendations to OVUU as far as a sort of quote unquote plan for future, for, for future communication and what we wanted to be able to provide to the community in a preemptive way to avoid surprise change. And as I mentioned, so it was a good sampling, the survey resulted in a good sampling of, of community members from all six towns. And the reason I know that is because it came up in one of the focus groups. Were these samplings relevant to the percentage of the population? And we actually did the math and yes, it was. There was a good mix, pretty much a 50-50 mix between community members and parents and guardians of school age children in the district. And then it was useful data to help guide the plan development for community feedback and input, as we mentioned, in the focus group and in the working group. And all these presentations, data and everything are on the task force bullet in the website. So you can see here, I just wanted to give a quick snapshot. Here's where, and I, it says 514 on here, some people could leave the town. No, they couldn't leave the town blank, maybe two people responded twice, but this is sort of the sampling of the towns. You can go to the next slide, Jean. Just sort of a 50-50 split between, you know, parent guardian and community member, which was pretty awesome. Next slide. And then this I thought was relevant. So we asked people, you know, consolidated district wide elementary versus district wide middle school model versus no change versus no opinion. And this sort of leads to some of the recommendations that we provided to the board as a result of this work. So the proposed action plan, when we deliberate, you know, deliberated and talked as a group, initially, the task force looked at no change versus what potential change would look like for the district. And when I say no change, okay, so even if we look at annual costs and necessary updates to all the schools in the district, the task force, the task force realized that there's really no such thing as no change. And I said, think about your own home maintenance. I mean, we're going to be doing something, we're going to be spending money somewhere. We got to maintain these schools. If we're providing equity, does that mean we need to hire additional staff at some schools, provide what other schools are providing? We looked at all of those details. And then for the change plan, we literally didn't, we didn't, we just put everything on the table. There were like 12 different scenarios that the task force brainstormed against. And I put ad nauseam because it really was, we talked and talked and talked. And then where we landed was, no, you can actually, Jean, back it up one more. So what, where we landed is, yes, we said, okay, we really need an action plan. And where I think the task force kept getting stuck, and I'm only saying this, I think, because it's relevant, is there's not, there's, there's factors within these decision making processes that, you know, could take five months, it could take five years. And we sort of were like, well, we can't, to do a definitive, two to five to 10 year plan was a little bit challenging. You know, because there were things outside of the board's control. So we really tried to look at, okay, what are the things we can control and how do we, how do we sort of evolve as a district in a way that serves everybody and gives them the information they need to be able to make decisions? And so we sort of came up with an action plan that had, you know, some flexibility and allowed for exploratory phases within each element of that plan. Next slide. Thank you. And so we said, okay, if we look at communication and viability guidelines, we'll say, okay, there's a level of communication planning that needs to happen where we really unify the district as a whole. You know, some people were still finding it confusing what unified district really meant. I mean, it was so new. And so we felt like we had to really communicate that. We had talked about identifying community and staff ambassadors to be able to be additional voices. The board's awesome, but if the board brings in, you know, five ambassadors, that expands our voice. And then how do we continue to sort of expand our voice within the community and within staff? You know, we wanted to look at board engagement opportunities where the board could be seen, you know, because there was a disconnect now with a unified board. Like before, with the smaller schools, you knew your board members, you knew, you know, where they'd be. And so we sort of said, okay, we need to actually make a concerted effort to become more visible and more available. And then we also developed some viability policies and guidelines that were triggers for change, which that sort of says, okay, if student population within a school decreases over three consistent years or two consistent years, what is that number and when do we start communicating that with the community so that they know that this is sort of coming up the pike as opposed to saying, okay, you know, population dropped by 10 students, we're closing that school. Well, no, how do we actually make that a little bit more proactive and be able to communicate that with families? And then we talked about exploring school boundaries and maybe shifting school boundaries to account for student population discrepancies as one way to do that, which I mentioned in the future slide, that, that, that was an viable option based on the initial research so that we sort of took that off the table. And then we wanted to look at a consolidated middle school. And the first step in that would be to hire an architect to evaluate if, you know, if the high school was even a viable option for a consolidated middle school, cost involved, being cognizant of the fact that people don't really want to spend more money. And so what would that look like and how would we communicate that in an effective way? And we felt like a consolidated middle school was something people are open to. And we also make the school as a whole more valuable based on all the research that we, that we did and people that we spoke with. There was a lot of background work on that as well. You can go to the next slide, Jean. And so just as a quick update, so what's happened since? RNESU did consult with an architect. This was pre-COVID. I'm going to just say everything, all this was pre-COVID. You know, to explore options and costs for a district wide middle school model at OVUHS as an initial first step, OVUU drafted and approved viability guidelines for the district that identify key benchmarks for change. And then, as I mentioned, initial exploration was completed, changing school boundaries to address student population discrepancies. And it was concluded that this is not a viable option just on, based on families that would be affected by the boundary change. And so that was sort of taken off the table. So some of this work has actually already been done even, even with COVID, which is exciting. Okay, next, next slide, my last and final key factors from task force still in play. Align student numbers with infrastructure capacity, staffing and opportunities are to maximize student benefit at the greatest value possible to the community. Manage a projected decline in student populations across the state and within our supervisory union. And then thoughtfully plan to meet the long term needs and interests of students and communities. And I believe that's my last slide, Jean.
It is. This would be a good time to maybe take any questions. I'll stop here if you can see each other. Around the task force or the work of the task force? See what a great job you did, Allison.
It's awesome.
No question.
Okay.
There. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things I want to, I didn't know that the entire survey was on, on the website. And I was just looking at the slides that were in the packet. But I found that there were conclusions reached without putting in the supporting data that went behind them. And some of that is very important because otherwise you're just out there making a statement. And it needs to be supported. And for example, middle schools really is a great idea and the research is very much in favor of that, but that wasn't there. And to me, it needs to be there. Then on the other hand, there's choice, which jumps out into a conclusion, which we'll see later on. But there's nothing in the preceding information that would justify that. And that gets into what is the research background on this as well, which really says it's not a good idea. And when you're talking about choice, at the same time, you're talking about boundary shifts. It's two things that are working well in, in different directions or towards the same end, but that needs to be resolved. But otherwise, it's, it's quite a piece of work, I tell you. I'm glad you put the slide in that had the people's names in it because that's one of the things that I was looking for in my reading, didn't see it. These people deserve a little credit, so I'm glad you gave it to them.
Thank you for that, Bill. And I would add that Angela was left off the slide of. She was quite there.
Yes, I'm even, I called you out, Angela. I'm so sorry. You know, I pulled it.
As usual.
Well, and you know what? I pulled it from the website. I was in, I was in, you know, like box mode. I'm going to update it right now. I can update it.
I remember having to do our pictures for that and we didn't want to.
I pulled it from the website. Did I just flake out like a flaky flake? I'm so sorry, Angela, because I even said out. On top of the data you were, Jesus.
I might have been missing off that. I never noticed.
I'm going to redirect.
I know, I'm looking.
Allison, I'm going to redirect us back to Bill's other comments.
Sorry, but I will update.
Angela, but we'll fix it for the presentation that goes online.
Thank you. I know, sorry. Thank you.
But thank you, Bill, for those, for those comments. And the information that was provided to the board prior to the meeting as we were preparing this summary document was a lot of the documents. And there was an entire task force webpage and the data is available from the surveys, et cetera. So if you can't find them, reach out. Greg Bernhardt led this task force for the hours and hours and hours that they met. I don't know, Greg, if you want to add anything to, to what led to it or where we went or?
Um, yeah, so, you know, I was, I was asked to say something about an hour ago, so I don't have anything prepared. But, um, you know, the task force, we, we came up with this plan and it's, it's hard to talk about now because it's hard to tell you about all the different thoughts and all the things we talked through. Some of the things Bill Mathis just brought up are things we talked about. In fact, we had a meeting simultaneously about middle school and the importance of five through eight being the proper size middle school. So as we were coming up with our plan, we had that in the back of our heads. And, you know, our plan really was to tackle many different issues all at once. Not to be reactive, but to be proactive, to create a plan that would be best for education, not just what do we do to save costs or what do we do about declining enrollments? We wanted to think about, well, what can we do to make education better in this district? And so our plan, you know, we did explore those boundary adjustments. And I don't know, you guys are all probably wondering why, one of the thoughts was, well, we have space in, in Lothrup, but we don't have any space in Nashaby. So if we're going to save costs without building anything, could, how do we get those students into that space from the northern part? And the boundary shift was the only way. But in the end, there were reasons why that plan was scrapped. You know, it was untenable, I think, on certain levels. When we came up with the idea of making a consolidated middle school of five through eight at Otter Valley, it solved the issue of creating a proper middle school. It solved some issues with the elementary schools. And most importantly, it solved the issue which our district learning that they own all the schools. And most importantly, it solved the issue which our district learning that they own all the schools. Still, that is hard for people to wrap their heads around. So people in Lothrup spending money on Leicester School, it's hard to wrap your head around for those people in the community. The idea of investing money in a centralized location would be probably the most tenable thing for the community. So there's, there's so many thoughts, I could go on and on. I'm just trying to touch upon some of them. But and it's hard to bring up the conversation because everybody's going to have thoughts about this. But we had extensive meetings, we had extensive focus groups. Like we said, we involve the community in this. And you know, this was the plan that came forward. We started getting the architect lined up and then COVID happened. And we haven't really had an opportunity to talk about it because we've been in COVID crisis for a year. So here we are now bringing this back to the table to kind of inform everybody where we left off. And you know, this is, this is just the beginning, I guess, to inform the board members that weren't here before and to kind of remind all of us where we were before COVID started. So. Does anybody have any specific questions, though?
Kevin? Oh, Kevin, we can't hear you. Can you type it into the chat? Maybe?
I don't hear Kevin.
Any other questions while Kevin's typing, maybe?
I thought it was very broad and hitting a whole bunch of broad range of issues. But in later things, I think a little more depth that you probably have and just needs to be plugged in in selected places on key points. But I was impressed by the real broad scope of the thing. And while Kevin is getting his thing together, did you, anybody catch the VPR story on global warming, rising sea levels, everybody from New York, Boston, moving to Vermont? That would solve the population problem.
No, but I think I read that in an apocalyptic novel a couple of years ago.
So I, you know, Kevin's question, we, does everybody read that, I assume?
Read it out loud for the recording. We have been talking on a macro level, says Kevin. I was wondering if we could get specific. I was anticipating a discussion of Sudbury facilities tonight. Yes, the next portion of the presentation is specific school by school so that you have a clear understanding of every facility.
Just to respond to what Bill just said, I remember we were talking about, well, how could populations change and deal with the declining enrollment? And I remember Emily brought up, well, something could happen, who knows, that could draw people to Vermont. And it is kind of strange that here we are, people are starting to move to Vermont now. So we'll see. But yeah, so the facilities of Sudbury and like the the north campus and stuff, those, those were, you know, discussed, but not in the, not in the terms of of us dealing with the elementary schools and the middle school and equity and making education better. That, that, we did discuss possibilities of different buildings, though.
You did. And we had Sudbury inviting both in use as schools at the time of the task force. It wasn't that long ago. But that led to the viability policy that the board eventually passed on. How do you know when when the time is to change the use of a school? Do you want me to go on to facilities? Are there more questions? Okay, let me share. Okay. Brenda, I'll get started and then I'm going to have Brenda take over. So one of the first things to realize, this is now updated data from what the task force had. We updated it through 2020, which is last October's enrollment. That 20 years ago, we had almost 1,600 students in the district. And we have decreased over two decades by 38%. The last 10 years alone, we've gone down by 8%. So we do have declining enrollment and we'll talk about what that means at each school, but it's pretty significant. I'm running two different pages here. So in the last 10 years, Nashaby has grown by 3%. Lothrup has dropped by a third. Otter Creek Academy, which is all three schools, Whiting, Sudbury and Lester combined, has dropped by almost a third, by 28%. And the overall elementary enrollments, which of course is going to drive future high school enrollments, has dropped by 13%. All of this is in the last 10 years. So that's, we, again, we do, excuse me, have declining enrollment.
You have cohort survival rate from birth. This is warm bodies that were enrolled in a given year.
No, this is, this is the people, the kids who are actually enrolled that we take through our October census amounts. Our October census of who's actually sitting in seats enrolled in the schools. Since 2000, Otter Valley's enrollment has dropped by 29%. However, since 2010, we have been fairly level at Otter Valley. There's only a 2% difference. So we we have maintained moving through, but we're about to see another drop. So I'd like Brenda to to kind of lead the discussion about the facilities. And I'll continue to manipulate the slideshow, Brenda, if that's okay.
Okay, that'd be great. Because I try to click it on my end and my clicker doesn't work on your screen. So yes, so Otter Valley, to talk a little bit about what our preschool and elementary facilities are. We have the three elementary campuses, Lothrup Elementary, Nashaby and Otter Creek. Lothrup has three actual buildings, I'm sorry, four. They have the Lothrup School, the Town Hall Building. I think everybody knows by now, even though it's called the Town Hall Building, it is actually a school building, is not owned by the town. And it is not where the Town Hall is. That caused me a lot of confusion my first few years here. The Blue House, we were not very creative in how we named things. That is literally the Blue House on Route 7, that is the Victorian right before the, before the school or just south of the school, depending on which direction you're coming. And then, of course, we have the Caverly Preschool Property that is on Plains Road in Pittsburgh. The Nashaby Elementary Facility or the Nashaby Campus has the Nashaby School Building that was built in the 80s, the Forest Hill, or oftentimes referred to as the Brick Building. And then the little art building, which is kind of tucked out behind the elementary school, the the main Nashaby School Building. And then Otter Creek Academy has three different locations that encompasses the Leicester School Building, the Sudbury School Building and the Whiting School Building. And of course, the high school has their main campus. And also we have the OV North Campus, which was years ago, the gym and school building for the Brandon Training School. Also, Otter Valley owns the Red Barn, the big red barn that is right next door to the Otter Valley North Campus and the central offices.
And I'm not sure, we'll talk about it some more, but I'm not sure people realize that we actually own that central office school building.
We do. So just some, so now talk specifics on each site, each location. So the the Lothrup Elementary School, as Greg said, and as Jean indicated, is where we've seen the largest decline in enrollment. It in 2020, there would be 300 students at Lothrup. And there's currently about 195 pre-K through six. The numbers are pre-K through six because preschools, enrollment, staffing and space is all dictated by licensing. So it has less flexibility or fluidity in how it is utilized. The Town Hall Building, again, that's not really by the Town Hall, that is the the Lothrup School. And it holds the gymnasium and the cafeteria. And it supports physical education and obviously food services. The Blue House is currently rented by our head custodian. But in the past, it has been used for special education programs and for the the LEAP or Lothrup Enrichment After School Program. Caverly is our preschool and it is licensed for 15 students per session. We have, it says we have two half-day programs. I think we, I think we're supposed to say we have, yes, we have two half-day programs, four days a week. So in total, we have four half-day programs. We have a three-year-old program and a four-year-old program. And then we also own land on the Caverly property, about 40 acres of undeveloped land. We no longer own a haunted house. So in the Act 46 merger and and before merging, we traded the haunted house for the Lothrup School Building because as is often in in histories, the Lothrup School was constructed by the town and never really turned over to the school district when school districts were formed. In general, the main campus is in really good, good shape. There's no significant needs. We have and do and always will identify needs that we should be addressing kind of cyclically and making sure that nothing surprises us or catches us off guard, or at least trying to eliminate that. The Caverly Building, though, has been left and has some significant repairs that are needed, about $33,000. We'll explain that in just a moment. And again, the Blue House is rented. And just so you know, it is rented at a fair market value. It is not a, you know, it's not a, it's not a freebie. So just to tell you a little bit about the classroom and the space configurations of the main campus. The Lothrup School has, did you get it all? 12 classrooms. It has a standalone art room, band room, guidance. Of course, it has the gym. And in the gym, there's also stage and some stage storage, library, a music room, a nurse's room, a world language room, a kitchen cafeteria, three rooms for offices for special educators and intervention staff. It has a main office that houses the the principal, the secretary and a conference room. And as a student support room, a resource or a book room, two small sensory rooms for students, a teacher's room, a small SLP, speech-language pathologist area for instruction, an upstairs conference room, tech and facility space, mental health space and a PE office. And then Caverly, just in case you haven't seen it, is really one large open classroom with a loft. It does also have a separate private space for office, bathroom facilities and a back exit porch. So just a couple of information, as Greg indicated, as enrollments indicated, Lothrup School is using all of their space effectively. But there is the potential to rearrange space, combine space if needed. And so one of the things that Jean mentioned, actually in the Rutland Northeast Meeting before this one, was that we've been actively looking for a preschool, I'm sorry, a childcare partner to provide childcare and preschool wraparound services. And should we be able to find one, we are confident that we could accommodate a program such as in Whiting in the Lothrup School in the existing facilities. It also means we could accommodate moving Caverly into the existing facilities. So this is just a little bit of census data to kind of let you know, you know, what the current enrollment is, which is the 172 students, what we are projecting for enrollment next year, which is just a few less, about 10 students less. It's very hard to project kindergarten enrollment under COVID because the one area where we did see some declining enrollments was in our three and four-year-old programs where families just decided under COVID to keep their their children home. So this is just a quick little snapshot. You'll be seeing this in detail and it will be updated for your next meeting when we come to you with some of the things we'd like to do over the summer. And this is kind of the Lothrup list. And we do have a subtotal there for you for those things that really should happen at the actual Lothrup Main School and Town Hall Building. But then also, we are looking at asking you to consider funding $33,000 for Caverly. The list below the blue line is just things that we know we're going to do. Again, we keep this on our radar and we keep a running list of priorities. And we kind of schedule out what year we think they might come up. And so anything with a two means it's going to come up next summer, not this summer. So it's really just there for information. Another thing that's important is to understand the debt and any debt service related to any of these facilities. Under Act 46, we absorbed, we, the new organization, took on the debt of the old, of each of the individual old, and obviously we have been paying it. We do borrow this debt with favorable municipal interest rates. And so it's important to understand that if, for whatever reason, we stop using a facility while we are still paying off the debt, we would and could have penalties, we would have penalties and repayment of debt. And so we wanted to provide you with this information to let you know, you know, kind of what the original borrowing was, the due date, when the final payment will be made, the interest rate and the principal. Lothrup has a unique situation. They have very generous benefactor, Dandy Burditt. And all of the debt associated with the Lothrup School is actually funded with withdrawals from the Burditt Fund annually. So this debt, while it is still a municipal debt, it is actually funded with Burditt Funds. And so the second one, whoops, the second loan on Lothrup is the biggest one. And that was done the most recently in 2016. And that was putting in a biomass boiler, updating our ventilations and our controls. And that final payment will be after I retire in 2036. Nashaby has, the Nashaby Campus has three main buildings, as we talked about. They have the Nashaby School Building, which includes classrooms, the cafeteria, the gym, I think Lori calls it a cafageminatorium and a library. The Forest Hill Building has preschool programs in the primary grades. And then the art building, which looks like a quintessential little red school building, has art for services K through, pre-K through six. Nashaby's main campus has a capacity of about 400 and we're exactly at 400. Again, general conditions are fabulous. We see no significant facility needs, but we are struggling with space, specifically bathrooms. All of our spaces are stretched to and just beyond capacity. We have special education, speech-language pathologist, interventionists, mental health counselors. They're in storage rooms and closets. They're in other repurposed spaces. In fiscal year 22, we'll add an additional classroom. And so we used to have a general nice office area for special educators and relevant mental health services that now needs to be dispersed throughout the building. So again, this is just a little snapshot of what Nashaby has. They have in the, in Nashaby School Building itself, there are 15 classrooms. There's two guidance offices. There's that gym. It is really a multipurpose room. It is not a standard-sized gymnasium. A library, between the library and gym, we have squeezed in three office spaces. We do have a music room, the nurse's office, a student support room, student support planning, small group instruction room. Oops, I guess I wrote that gym, library, three offices in there twice. Then, of course, there's the main office, which houses or hosts the secretary, a teacher copy and mail. And mail center and the principal's office and we will be um repurposing a small space for uh assistant principal. The art building is the little red school building and that is housed just for art and art supplies. And then the Forestale Building has eight classrooms, four per floor. And again, using every little space. So as you walk up the brand new steps, thank you very much, Stephen. Uh and enter the entryway, there are two offices on either side. Those small little offices are used on the right hand. Or left hand side. Behind that entryway, there is also another small cubicle office. In the middle of the of the first floor, we do have a nice sensory room. That is used for primary age students and preschool students. There is also a stage, but it is not used for performances. That houses the special education offices and services. And then the former kitchen now houses. Uh now holds three professional staff offices. And should you ever wish to climb out the window, you can access the roof. Uh so again, this is just looking at enrollments for next year. We are projecting an increase in enrollment. Again, we're only looking at K six preschool is regulated differently. So K six is. Is looking at an increase of uh up to about almost three hundred and sixty students. And that is why we have added the. Uh third teacher back into, I think it was uh sixth grade. So what we see really as needing at Nashaby currently, um and what we see for some future challenges is we really would like. Some office spaces for our professionals. Again, I I think I explained to you, we have them literally tucked all over the building. We have uh lost a lot of storage based on, and this is a good thing, based on adding some ventilation. Equipment in the two thousand and sixteen project, but it did take away a lot of storage. So we're really strapped on storage. We have um a real hard time finding small group space for small group instruction, privacy conferences. Uh even just meeting in a general conference area. If you have a meeting at Nashaby and it's not confidential, it's often in the back. Corner of the library because there is no space for that. The Nashaby Building also needs some more bathrooms. Currently, there are uh thirteen classrooms or approximately. Two hundred and forty students served by two multi-style bathrooms. And then the multipurpose room, just a reminder, um the gym is split uh in half and for four half. Four and a half, four hours each day, half of the space is used as the cafeteria for. Uh serving food, whether it's breakfast or lunch. And then that limits the ability to use only half of the gym. For physical education classes. And again, kind of looking at some of the upgrades that we're anticipating, this is just a a snapshot into next. Next meeting, but we are looking at some ventilation and we're hoping that that will be covered by some coronavirus relief funds. CRF funds. So it's really a little bit of information. Um we are looking at about fifty thousand dollars of requests. To um do again. These are standard routine things, investments, improvements that we want to make. And then um a couple of other things that are kind of below the line and labeled with twos. Are things that we know we need to do and would slate for next summer. So Nashaby um has some debt associated with their construction project in two thousand and sixteen. It is um it was a one point seven million dollar project. It has uh eighty five thousand dollars a year in principal. An interest rate of two point seven three percent, which is wonderful. Again, the final payment is in twenty thirty six. And like the Pittsburgh debt, we do have a benefactor, the Ely Trust Fund. Is currently being used to cover the principal and interest on this project. Lester, uh sorry. So um Otter Creek Academy, the the buildings of Lester Sudbury and Whiting. So let's start at first with Lester. Lester is at capacity, perhaps one would say even above capacity. And that's approximately seven student, uh seventy students. General facility, we're struggling here. We have, uh we need spaces for offices for meetings. Um again, we're at capacity. We need permanent parking. You'll remember we put in some temporary parking in the fall. You remember that right now we have water problems. We do not have drinkable water. We're bringing in water. And we're cooking off site. Um we currently have a stable in-ground septic system. And we hope that it continues to be that way, but could or if it were to need to be replaced, it is likely. That we would have to pump waste and it would be a significant and immediate need. You know, there's no pre-warning or precursor to that. Sudbury Country School, um just in case you haven't had the chance to visit it, it is a passive solar facility with three open classrooms. A central library uh and central multipurpose and a separate multipurpose room. Current capacity is probably around forty students. Um and it is currently an exponential education center. Used by other schools and it's not housing daily programs. The general condition and the layout, we need some repairs specifically to the. The kind of, I call it the hobbit hole uh exit. It it right now, if you drive by it, we'll see a. Rather unattractive blue tarp covering it, but it does need to have some repairs for that exit. And then the Whiting Elementary School, that is our childcare partnership. And currently, we have three upstairs classrooms. That is used by the childcare partner. There is a uh approximate capacity of twenty five students per room or seventy five students. And I believe they're at capacity with a waiting list. Downstairs is our licensed preschool program, which has a license for sixteen students. We currently have twenty two because we have them in split sessions. We have a three year old program and a four year old program. It is a nice brick building, general condition. There's no real significant needs identified at Sudbury and uh Whiting. So just to tell you a little bit more about the building, so Lester Building has five classrooms. It has the a shared. Uh guidance principle and actually uh instructional intervention are are all in the same office. So privacy is a challenge. The multipurpose room. Yeah, it or the gym cafeteria also houses the library, the art and the music, as well as teacher copy area and prep. The nurse office is very, very small. It would not accommodate more than one sick child. And has limited privacy. The school secretary, um we have a school secretary office. Uh we also have one office space for professionals that hosts uh three professionals, maybe four, I'm sorry. Three special educations and mental health, as well as library and general storage. We do have a garage that is unheated, but in good condition, that is used for just general storage. Sudbury, I think we talked a little bit about that um as well as whiting. And then enrollments, we are seeing maybe a little uptick a little bit. We're at seventy students right now. We're anticipating uh seventy two to seventy four. For next year. Again, it's kind of hard to anticipate that kindergarten enrollment. But with the success of our preschool program, um the four year old program at Whiting is fully enrolled. So we are anticipating to see uh maybe ten, uh at least eight, but maybe ten, maybe um one or two more. So this is where we have our most immediate needs and concerns. Um one of the things that we really would like to see is a proper adult bathroom. Um a proper nurse's office with bathroom and laundry facilities together collectively. Um private office space for guidance, uh special education services, speech services, mental health. We'd like to really reclaim the multipurpose room, move the library to a dedicated space and use this for all unified arts. This dedicated space. Right now, the multipurpose room is not being used to feed students or for meals. Because of COVID, we are anticipating next year that we will be able to serve meals collectively again. And right now, we we don't have the space because it's being repurposed. Just a reminder, we are in the process of still investigating the source of the contamination of our water. Um we we do not have drinkable water and meals are are prepared off-site and delivered in. We are anticipating that throughout the whole year. Um but they are there. They were literally there last week drilling test holes. To see if we can circle into where the contamination is coming from. Just a reminder, the septic system is operating and there's no indications of problems. And every night, you should say a little. A little prayer to how whoever you may believe in that that continues, because should it fail, we would need an alternative system. That likely means pumping waste offsite. Not impossible. We do that at Whiting, but it is extensive. Um the parking is uh temporary, literally a gravel parking lot on the. Um uh we kind of commandeered some of the fields and uh we really want to make that more permanent. And a final reminder that I don't uh. I don't understand how uh flood zones are designated. We have not seen floods at Leicester. But Leicester is in a Vermont designated flood zone. So uh here's again a little snapshot of what we're looking at for Leicester that you'll see more about or hear more about next month. But we are looking at adding some ventilation. Again, information only. We're hoping that will be funded with coronavirus relief funds. We are looking at um talking about a study of the building to really understand what our options are, short term, long term. Immediate, short term and long term. And we're expecting that, that would be an architectural study. And we're looking at making the parking permanent. We won't know what the well cost is. Uh Stephen, who is also on this uh meeting, is working and hoping to uh apply for a grant. And we are hopeful that many or much of that would be funded with the grant, but that it it's not an optional expense, obviously. Um, you know, we've talked about some of the things that we really need listed below again for informational purposes. We do have some Esser funds, some uh uh coronavirus funds that are designated for schools. That we would like to identify in addressing these things that we really need that are related to. Uh mitigating the virus. And then just a, you know, kind of in future years, again, we are looking at a multi-phased. Uh proposal to replace galvanized water lines within the building. It's not something we're looking at doing in the immediate future. And if and when we start doing that, it would be a a phased approach. Uh Leicester, so just to talk a little bit about what we're looking at, um so we we really should replace the the door. And the wall only. It's a a fairly costly um investment of about twenty thousand. But the rest of the things uh are long term and and not something that we're looking to uh put on right away. Just so you know, that little list on the bottom um with the designation of zero, I don't usually include that because that means it's going to be covered. Under the general fund budget. That's just our general operations. So then um we've talked about some potential ideas and uses for um Otter Creek uh Otter Creek Academy at Sudbury.
Yeah, do you want me to jump in on this slide, Brenda?
Yes, because you're, something's. Uh blocking some of it on my.
I know. I have no idea what that is, why it turns up, how to get rid. I just have no idea.
Okay, yes, please.
Um so at Sudbury, um you know, as we've been talking internally about what it could be used for. Marsha Bruce, our special services director is on this call also. And she shared with us that um we have an immediate need for. A therapeutic, uh non-special education therapeutic program for elementary students. And if Sudbury were to be used for that, that would actually save us out of district tuition immediately. As well as generate tuition from other regional districts who also have this need for an elementary therapeutic program. If we went that direction, then that program would need a year to plan and be up and running in fall of two thousand and twenty two. Uh and this is something that we would like you to seriously consider. We also have received one person of interest in a private child childcare partnership at Sudbury. Similar to the Whiting Partnership. We've asked the person who contacted us to return with a proposal and we have not yet seen that. We also offered the building to Brandon Parent Child Center as they were struggling with whatever their struggles are, but they have not responded or accepted that yet. Currently, we've been using it as an experiential learning center, uh as well as a professional development space, honestly, this year, only as the experiential learning center. Um for all schools to access and access was limited this year because of COVID and not wanting to put kids on the bus. But the intention was, um Leicester has used it the most. And the intention was that it's a place where kids could go and get some of that outdoor learning. And it can kind of be a center there. But again, with with these ideas, just as you start your conversations and kick around. Um we do have an immediate need for a collaborative therapeutic program for elementary students. And. Okay, back to you, Brenda.
Thank you. Uh so whiting, again, we would look at some ventilation covered with a grant. Um we are looking at some storage and our shed that is on campus or on the site needs to. Be replaced and we're really thinking it should be replaced with two sheds, one shed that is uh designed for. The childcare program and one shed that is designed for the preschool program. We also need to address the fencing around the preschool uh playground. When it was put in, the fence was put on a corner. And um that makes it hard to latch and close appropriately. And we've tried to fix that a couple of times. With interim measures, but we really believe it has to not be on the corner and the gate needs to be moved to the center of the. Of the fence, not a corner, so that it has the stability and can properly latch. Um you know, just kind of keeping uh an idea. It's interesting that that parking is two years out. I would put it farther than that. But that just gives you a history of kind of some of the other things we're thinking about. Uh there is some debt associated with whiting. Uh it was used to, in two thousand and seven, we installed. A new septic system with a pump and a mound that is actually a mile up the road. So we do have some experience with pumping waste. Should that be something we ever needed to do anywhere else? Uh we do pay a principal uh uh payment every year of about five thousand dollars. The interest rate is four percent. The final payment is coming up sooner than any of the others in two thousand and twenty seven. It is important to note that within the general fund operating budget, we also pay a thousand dollars a year lease. To the property owners who um actually uh host the mound system for us. And they also maintain it for us every year. And that thousand dollars is in perpetuity, so that doesn't uh go away when the lease goes away. Because it will still have the mound system there, obviously. Utter Valley Union Middle High School, general conditions are great. Um you don't see any real needs for significant improvements. We have recently been um thankful for the improvements that I've made, the ADA accessibility, the bathrooms. The update to the front entrance are just so fabulous. Uh as you know, this should be true everywhere. We now have remote keyless entry. And uh most recently, the new auditorium seats will be coming in in early May. So. The auditorium, if you haven't had a chance to see it, I know pictures have been posted on Facebook, but it looks fabulous. So the. The main campus feels like it's in great repair and in great systems. The north campus is generally good. Again, we've updated the interior locks and added some remote keyless entry. The north campus Red Barn just is a a nice big storage building. It is used for storage equipment. Sometimes it's used for tech recycling. You know, it's all gathered there until it can be cleaned and swiped and then recycled or returned. Uh there are some stagings in there for graduations, that type of thing. But there is no heat in the building, but it is sound, sound condition. Good roof, good sides, and it does. Good roof, good sides, and it does have um, the height of a bus, uh, a bus garage door. And then the central office, I think many of you have probably been there. Uh, we do have uh, twenty-four staff members in the office. We are uh, bursting or filling up every space upstairs and downstairs of this facility. We do have um, conference rooms upstairs and uh, a space downstairs. And we have a small conference room that Stephen Eaton kind of squats in as well. But it can be used for private conferences and testing sometimes of students. Um, Utter Valley Union Middle and High School enrollments are, you know, as Jean said, uh, from two thousand, they've gone down a significant amount. But from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, we seem to have leveled off and been fluctuating um, much, much more. Uh, much, much less. So I think, should I turn this over to?
Yeah, I think, um, Marsha, do you want to walk through these, these couple of slides? Or would you like me to?
Well, I don't mind.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. This is Otter Valley North Campus. Um, we serve two groups of students and alternative special edge approach, oh, education programs utilizing the entire building. So if you're not familiar with the building, it's, it's two sides with a gym in the middle. So we're able to service two different populations because they're separated by the gym. Due to its unique makeup, it's growing to include more students that have the disability category of autism spectrum disorder. Uh, two elementary students will start attending there next year to transition there uh, because they will need that level of supervision um, to transition to middle school. So we're transitioning them earlier. Their teams have met. They'll be at Nashaby half day and then they'll transition there to afternoons. This is a very specialized setting and these are our students who I have our most needs. So this program allows us to service our students locally rather than send them to more expensive um, placements out of district. Um, and then the placement decisions are based on what a service, what services can be offered and um, where students are placed for the uh, least restrictive environment. So uh, if we moved that program placements would be revisited and each individual team would have to look at what is appropriate for each student. Um, the physical layout certainly matters for these students, um, these students who can't, can't succeed in the larger environment at Otter Valley because of the sensory input or that is given in a school like that and their need for a smaller, more innovative environment. Um, I'm a little ill, so excuse me if I don't articulate well or you'd like to ask me a question, please do. Um, this site is right near our offices, which is wonderful because we can support it. Um, it's not far from Otter Valley, but certainly it has the support of us at Rutland Northeast Supervisor Union. And it allows us to, to interact with those students and visit them throughout the year, which is certainly uh, a wonderful thing. And it's also a safety concern, so we're close to them. Uh, like I said, Jim and Jeff and Christine are certainly very responsive, but we're just a moments away, which is certainly important for this location. Um, it's also close to the granite community, the shuttle runs uh, and um, the students and the families certainly feel as a valuable part of their community because they're part of the main corridor of Route seven and Otter Valley. Um, high school students and middle school students need to access their community. They need to be engaged in vocational um, opportunities and this site certainly allows that to happen. Um, I think that's, is that the last slide? And I don't know if you have any questions. Brenda, you want to take it over for this or do you want me to?
Marsha, this slide is still you and we're not taking questions till the end because we're close to the end, so we.
Thank you. So it does have a fully equipped kitchen. When special education was given our funds, we were able to renovate the kitchen. That kitchen's very important because these students need to engage in a, in adult daily living skills. And um, it's a, it's a nice kitchen and it serves their needs. There's a separate ramp and handicapped accessible area that meets ADAs that anyone can get in and out of the facility. Uh, the two smart boards are in both classrooms. They again were purchased with the RF funds. So the special education funds did help upgrade the facility. There's many built-in desks, closets and a lot of things that meet the needs of the students. Um,
Yeah, there's one.
Yep, there's a workspace downstairs that's uh, for students to engage in hands-on learning. That's been a wonderful uh, area for them. There's a full-size gym which separates them, the, the adaptive PE, project-based learning, team-building activities, also celebrations of life and family outings, uh, engagement with families all happen there. Um, and it does have a direct bus access to the ramp and entrance for easy access for anyone who has those kinds of needs. And there are separate adult-sized bathrooms and staff bathrooms.
And back to Brenda, Marsha.
Yep, back to Brenda.
Thanks, Marsha. So we have identified um, some immediate needs that we would like to address for Otter Valley and the north campus next year. Uh, most of the first three or four of them are at Otter Valley North, uh, I'm sorry, at Otter Valley Main Campus. Um, you know, we want to replace the library windows. That was the only thing that wasn't replaced in the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen biomass conversion. Um, we're looking at the purchase of a truck or plow so that we can do grounds maintenance. We have little things like we have to hang the backboards that we have, but because they're new, bigger, they need different supports and some uh, you know, a little bit more than just a few bolts. As I, as I said to Rich, what, we can't just hang them? So no, we can't just hang them. And it's time to replace our diesel pump. The OV North Campus, the biggest improvement we would like to do is to, uh, we are still struggling with updating the heating controls so that we don't have, you know, either all or nothing in regards to heat. So again, Otter Valley has uh, two, two debts. The first one is the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight construction. This was a significant construction project, not a uh, you know, sort of flashy one. But it updated the wastewater treatment facility. It redesigned some of the front offices, added uh, more appropriate nursing spaces. But it also did that beautiful front entrance way with the art otters and the piazza look. So it, yeah, it excavated and added drainage to stop the flooding right in front of the office or in front of the entrance. The annual principal is about a thou- a hundred thousand dollars a year. The rate is four point two percent and the final payment is two thousand and twenty-seven. And then um, we also have the second debt service, which was the energy efficiency project. So that was the implementation of the biomass boiler. We were connecting our multiple heating systems all on one. We were upgrading many of the original windows uh, in the original footprint of the building. We added the solar panels and we updated our lighting. This is a lease instead of a bond, so the principal interest vary per year and they escalate as time passes because it was designed as a performance contract. And what that means is you really shift the costs that you would pay for energy into construction debt service. And so the cost of the project escalates over time because the cost of energy is always anticipated to escalate over uh, overtime. So we did refinance this recently. You may remember that in December of twenty twenty to get a lower interest rate. Uh, and then the central office. And so uh, it houses, as, as mentioned before, um, about twenty-four people. There are six different departments, including the evaluation, the special education evaluation team. As Jean indicated before, it is actually owned by Otter Valley. Um, and there is, you know, there's no rent or lease on it. While there is a rent of a dollar a year, which I never pay, so you can try to evict us, I suppose. But there is no additional debt service related to that building. Um, and it's a great building. It's a bu- it's a brick building. It's fully sprinklered. It has a fairly new roof and all new windows. And uh, just recently in this year, we added keyless access uh, to that building as well. And so the only thing it doesn't have is ventilation. We wouldn't, but we're not asking to do any of that at this point. Um, really, uh, I'm noticing that we need to do a little bit of front entrance up uh, landscaping, but that's budgeted in our general fund.
I think this is back to me.
Yes.
So um, the task force did talk about what would trigger facility changes. Close, closing a school, uh, repurposing a school and revise the class size policy. There's a link in here and the class size procedures. And it includes looking at the current and projected enrollments, especially as class size ratios drop below our class size minimum. Also being aware of staff attrition, particularly when the majority of a small school staff decide to leave us, which um, nearly happened a little while ago. Um, major facility projects is defined by the site needs such as Lester's. Lester has some major projects ahead of it. Facility damages that are significant, such as if there were a fire or a flood or something like that. And programmatic needs are the things that would be looked at. And so what to do, I'm not going to read all this to you. This is your charter language on what to do if you decide that any of, you may, you know now, after an hour and a half of this, that you own an awful lot of property. So what if you don't want any of that property at any particular time? That's the formal language that's in your articles of agreement. And what it means is um, the towns would have first right of refusal for any of the properties. So for example, if you chose to no longer own Sudbury School, Sudbury Town would have first right of, of refusal. You however, would still be responsible for any debt on the building, which is why we wanted to share with you the status of each building. And if we no longer need a facility with debt still outstanding, such as Whiting, for example, we also would have to re- repay fees to settle with the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank. And IRS because we had special municipal borrowing as a public school facility. If the towns acquire a facility, they must keep it for five years or pay back any capital improvements. If they don't, if they don't want it, if they refuse um, to accept it, then you can sell it, pay off your debts, et cetera. So we're at the end of all this. I know it was very dense, but if you're really going to look at all of your facilities, we felt that you needed to know all of your facilities and what you owed on them, what the capacity was, what they're used for. So the questions that um, you, just to kick off your conversation, you can go anyplace you want. But it would be nice to know at the end of your couple of meetings, you know, I think you're taking two or three meetings to discuss this. Um, it, are, are, is that a good use for Sudbury School to build a reasonable, regional collaborative therapeutic elementary program? And really wanted to make you very aware of the badly needed funds for Lester School and Nashaby School. Now I think we can take questions and it looked like Barry's hand was up first and then Kevin's.
Actually, Jean, um, coincidentally, my, I had two questions and then they were both around those two points that you just had up. One was for Brenda and Brenda, you may have mentioned this already, so maybe just need to confirm it with me. But the, the proposed operational space changes that you'd like to do at Lester, is that doable within the footprint of the existing building or would a addition be required?
It is not doable within the existing footprint of the building. Um, ideally, what we would like to think about doing is um, actually using some of the Esser funds to put in a modular classroom. We say that with hesitancy because we all have visions of those trailers. But we really think that it is needed, that we would be able to add um, a dedicated space for library RN music of a classroom size. We would have a dedicated um, nurses space that provided for the option if we had more than one child who was sick, including bathroom facilities. We would have a private office for the guidance counselor, taking them out of the principal's office. We would have another office suite with three or four people in it um, for special education or intervention staff so that they could meet together. And um, that would do two things. One, it would be funded with Esser funds. And we have just shy of seven million dollars of Esser funds, of which six hundred and fifty, well, quite a few of them are kind of earmarked. But we do still have resources and it buys you, the board, a couple of years to think about what your uh, long-term ideas and thoughts are on the building.
Okay. And, and the other question I had was for you, Jean, on the on the suggestion that Marsha gave you for the potential use of Sudbury School, um, how would those needs be met right now?
Marsha, would you like to answer that?
Yes, right now we have three, well, we have four students, but three students that we would bring back to district that are out of district and high-cost placements. We'd start with those three because we'd start with our own students.
Okay.
And out-of-district placements can easily run, what, Marsha, seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
These are about forty, forty-five. These aren't as expensive, but we pay for the related services separately, so it adds up. And we, Rich could speak to the transportation, uh, or Brenda could, because that's also our responsibility, which adds up. And that makes me think of four students we'd be bringing back. Because as I think of transportation, I remember the fourth that is very far away. It's very costly for us to transport daily.
So Marsha, I, I think what you're saying is that, that out-of-district placement is far away. Is that what I heard you say?
We do, we do, I, for, for, I don't want to identify, but we do bus an hour and a half away for one student. That's a long way.
So geographically, how would Sudbury be an improvement over that or would it be a lot?
Oh, oh, a huge improvement. Sudbury from where that student lives is about fifteen minutes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think Kevin was next and then Bill.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I just wanted to uh, ask the chair to make sure that this does get on um, uh, subsequent meetings. We really haven't had a chance for board discussion and this is a policy board and we, we need to think about uh, have more uh, chance for a freewheeling board discussion about these important issues. Um, well, it's always good to get information. I was a little overwhelmed tonight by the, by the tail. Um, and uh, getting in the weeds about, you know, the our, at um, Whiting or whatever is, is um, probably not the role of the board. So I very much appreciate the chance. Uh, now we're more than three quarters of the way through our meeting now. I don't know about other people, but my energy flags about this point. Uh, I think it's probably a bad time to begin the board section of a discussion, so I'd very much like to uh, to see that happen in the future. And then uh, the other thing is, I think, just want to throw out there that I think the, the name North Campus is a bit of a misnomer because a campus implies plentiful green space. That's what the word means. And we don't really have that. We have, we have a, a, a building there um, that lacks um, campus facilities. Uh, and then also I'd like to note that I tried to pull the uh, meeting minutes uh, this tonight, had technical problems, obviously, uh, and I'd like to make sure that those meeting minutes are pulled uh, from the, the meeting on the seventh uh, in the future, so we can discuss those more thoroughly. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh, Bill, you were next. Bill, you need to unmute yourself.
Three quick questions. The first is, do we own but the Caverly Recreation Area including the swimming pot, pool or pond, whatever we want to call it. The second thing is, have we looked at refinancing any of this bonded indebtedness? And if so, does it look feasible? And the third thing, which was uh, I think a little more important, which gets back to our opening discussion. It talked about re-establishing trust. And I'm saying, do we have a trust problem that we need to worry about?
So Brenda, do you want to talk about the first two? Do we own?
Um, I, I'm not, we, we do not own a pond. Um, the forty acres that we own by Caverly is just forty acres. It doesn't have any body of water on it. Um, I don't know if, if you're asking about the Pittsburgh Recreation.
Yes.
Well, yeah, that is not owned by us. Thankfully, that is owned by the town. Um, in regards to refinancing, we did just refinance the Otter Valley Performance Contract in December to get the lower rate. All of the other bonds are with the Vermont Municipal Bond. All of the other bonds are with the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank. And the, the beauty of that is we get a competitive rate because they consolidate all borrowings throughout Vermont municipal borrowings and they kind of go to the bond bank or go to market, if you will, with one big package. So we are not in control of refinancing that. But they have and always do look at and watch the market and will initiate a refinancing if it is appropriate or if the timing is right.
I'll take, I'll take the third question, Bill. The trust issue that was discussed at the task force and by the board was post-merger, where we had six different towns now needing to become one unified district. And that really played out in the two bond votes where townspeople said, you know, I live in X town, I don't want to pay for a school in X other town. And that, that again, continued feeling of not being unified. So trust may or may not be the right word, but, but there's a unification process that takes time after a merger like we had. That, the, the work of the task force and Greg spoke to it when he talked about one of the task force recommendations was the Unified Middle School because people won't necessarily invest in the space issues at Neshabie or the water issues at Lester, but they'll invest in anything Otter Valley wants because it's a unified school and everybody has a piece of it. People don't yet realize that they have a piece of all of the buildings that we brought to you tonight.
Thank you.
Angela? Angela, you need to unmute. We can't hear you.
She is. She was unmuted.
Oh, still can't hear her. We're not hearing anything.
Angela, try turning up the volume on your computer. Sometimes that does it.
We're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Oh, the last slide, the one with the two questions. Yes, Natalie. Angela, you could also try leaving and returning.
Does anyone, oh, good. All right. So Angela's going to type what she wants to ask. Does anyone else have questions while she's typing? We've heard, we've also overheard, you know, the overarching, you know, what you've come up with for us to know. Is there anything that any of the principals or our facilities directors would like to point out to us that may have been missed or that they feel is important for us to know?
I, I would just like to say thank you to the board. I know that there have been some, over the past six years, there have been some just really nice upgrades and upkeep to Lothrup that have been made. And it's made a significant difference and people have noticed. And it's just brought some new life to the school, so thank you.
And if I may add, I would like to, Brenda and also Steve Eaton, our facilities manager, for excellent work time and time again to help us identify the areas of need. A lot of them we know about and have recommended to them. And I have felt that they have been very empathetic and very enthusiastic about helping us identify solutions, especially in my case at Lester, we've come to a real crossroads in terms of, you know, a pretty dire need for office space. I felt very well-served by all of our central office administrators and I appreciate their very specific and thorough assistance.
I'd like to speak up a little bit too. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So, so usually around November, we start putting some prices on our project numbers on what we've identified as needs. As you know, we've run into a situation with COVID, we've run into a situation with tariffs and other things that have driven the cost of construction materials through the roof. I think what I heard was lumber has gone up 130% since last year at this time. And over the last month, we've seen like a 30% increase in building materials. So some of these numbers that we put together, we, and quotes that we got for the numbers of, in these projects happened before this last jump in, in prices. I just didn't want, I did want you to be aware of that. The other thing that came to light in between putting this together was that Whiting School has really kind of an outdated electrical service. It, it's an old federal panel that, that we really can't get parts for. It's an obsolete panel. So that's another project that really didn't get to Brenda in time to get into this. That project is really like $30,000. The director of the art program, although there's nothing in writing or anything, has mentioned that they would be willing to kick in maybe up to half for something like that. Other than that, that's really all I, I had. I just wanted you to be aware of those things.
I can answer. Angela has asked me a question in the chat.
Yeah, could you read the question before you answer it?
Yes. Marcia, can you explain how we will support the services of the three students? It is obvious that we will have new services to support, correct? Will there be new hires and how will that be paid? Angela, we would look at our current configurations from some, for some services, so we already pay for these students. So what your, what your director would do, which is me, is I'd look at a financially reasonable way to bring them back and not cost you more money. You already pay for each of these students, so we would bring them back and not extend that amount of money. That would be the challenge. I do know that if we open this program, Jean mentioned it would be non-special education because we would want to open it to students who aren't necessarily on IEPs. And my suggestion would be that at least one principal tonight would suggest that they would have at least a couple non-IEP students who are struggling, who are trauma students, who they would refer to our own program, who also come with their own money and supports. So we might have to hire a new special educator, but the cost of that would be covered by the tuition we already pay for these students to leave our district.
Thank you, Marcia. Barbara, do you want us to read what you wrote or do you want to speak to it?
I'm, I'm happy to repeat what I wrote. I just wanted to thank you and Brenda and Marcia for presenting the information. These are the details we actually need to know to make the big decisions and it is a lot of information, but I value it. I, I, I like getting a sense of what our enroll, enrollments are and what the trends are in those enrollments because we have to use that information to make big decisions. And thank you for presenting it so well and so clearly.
Thank you, and you all will have a copy of this shortly. Jean, I-
Do you have another question?
Was that addressed to me?
Yeah, your hand is up. I wanted to know if you had another-
Yes, okay. I just couldn't hear you. Marcia had talked about the, well, the presentation talked about the Otter Valley Need for Special Education plus the number of kids for a therapeutic elementary program. What is the scope of the problem here? Do we have a great increase in IEPs or needy population that we need to address?
We have across the state traumatized children who need specific learning environments and specific tragedies, strategies to deal with their trauma. And they aren't all IEP students. That's across the board. And in our state, we know there's certain variables in our communities and society that have impacted our families. And when those children enter our schools, it is very difficult for them to have their therapeutic needs met unless the environment wraps around those needs. And that's hard in a larger school that has to meet the needs of all students. And when it's trauma, it's particularly sensitive and particularly important to do it in a very thought-out manner, in a controlled environment, to be able to give them what they need and have them succeed. And again, I think any principal might speak up and answer that question as well.
Thank you.
Jean, I just wanted to clarify. I think there was a misunderstanding. I don't want anybody to think, well, mental health is in a closet. When Brenda and I talked, we talked about they're in a very small room and they need a larger room. But I certainly wouldn't want that to go out to the public, that we are putting Brooklyn Mental Health staff in a closet. Because they do meet with students.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say, I know that Marcia's, they're talking about an elementary school model, but certainly to get those issues addressed at the elementary school level will bode well for when they reach seven through 12.
What's your numbers look like, Jim?
For what, Bill?
Special needs. Are they increasing, staying about the same proportionately, the same?
I, I think that we're, you know, I think Brenda or Marcia, you probably know that IEP-
Bill, since you were superintendent, our child count has gone down steadily.
This is good.
But I would say probably our students needing services through 504s, et cetera, may have been increasing.
Yes, yes. It isn't just the students that are on IEPs that challenge our systems of support. I'd love Mrs. Alexander to speak up and talk about what it's like to have a trauma-informed setting and why some students might need a therapeutic school. I kind of tried to poke, but she didn't take the bait. Sure, I'm happy to speak, Marcia. I think you just had to say. So yes, we have definitely found success at Lothrup when we are able to provide, as Marcia said, that sort of controlled setting. And we have students that we have, when we're able to do this, when the staffing is right, when the setting is right, when all of the things are, are right. We have students that we've been able to work with in our primary grades and you could not even pick them out of, you know, a fifth or sixth grade classroom. But that's not always possible. We, you know, it depends on the year, on the different needs. A, a, a student I can think of in particular, the, the conditions were just right. We had the staffing that year to be able to do some very intensive work with that primary student and that student is incredibly successful with very little supports right now. And you would not be able to walk into the classroom and, and pick out which student that is. So I, you know, I can, I can think of two students in my school right now that would benefit from, you know, this type of a setting. I actually had just mentioned that to Marcia recently. So yeah, there's definitely a need for this type of setting within our district.
Okay, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Debbie.
Lots of comments and we obviously weren't going to make any major decisions tonight. But the one thing that I think, and tell me whether or not you agree, I think we need to bring this back to our second meeting in May and continue our discussion. I don't think we can make any kind of ideas of what our next steps are until we really get into the need of it. We've gotten a lot of, in great information tonight, I will definitely say that. And it's been great that all of you have been able to be here and chime in with your anecdotes and, and things that you need. So I would suggest that we bring this back to our meet, second meeting in May, where we actually dive in, take a deeper dive and talk about this as a board. Consider the questions that Jean has brought forth, but I think we all have other questions too that we would like to discuss. But there's just not enough time tonight to do that.
I did email the presentation to the board. It'll be on the web for the full community tomorrow so that you can dig into the details yourself. And, and truly, you know, I appreciate what you said, Barbara. This wasn't something where we could just simply tell you what buildings you own. If you're really, I mean, the task, this is what the task force discovered, is that you have to dig into what you've got if you're going to make changes, so that they're thoughtful changes. Angela did post a comment in the chat, which is difficult because we want to be public and transparent. I'll read the comment, but it's probably for your future discussion. She says, "We are talking about taking these kids out of the elementary and placing them in a school with not very many students. Isn't that reverse of what we want to do?" I thought the goal is to keep them in the full school setting, so we can address that in your future conversation.
Does someone want to answer that question?
Oh, do you want us to answer it tonight, Marcia?
Well, no, we can just, okay, so.
I can answer the question if you'd like. So the bulk of the students will be out of districts, so they're in small, very individualized settings. They're not in public elementary schools. The students Debbie referred to, we do have a couple students that need a trauma-informed setting and they are pushing the capacity of the school they're in. And they aren't necessarily in the classroom with their peers all the time if they're having mental health crises or trauma reenactments. So, you know, we have taken a lot of classes to be trauma-informed and we want to do what's right for students who are having trauma enact, reenactments. And sometimes they can't get the therapy they need and come to terms with the trauma in the classroom or in the building with the other students, and they need to do that privately.
And it's intended to be short-term, to teach the skills needed so that the students return to the full classroom. It's not intended to be a permanent separation and it, to make a decision like that, Marcia would tell you, there's a very thorough process that has to, that the team, including the family, has to go through.
And if I could add, these are often students that are not in need of specialized instruction. And so the, the quicker that we can intervene and help with this trauma piece, the less amount of instruction they're missing. And we can, you know, prevent them from needing specialized instruction later on because of developing, you know, so much lost instruction, so.
Natalie, I see your hand is up.
Is this only focused on children who experience trauma? Because some students can have mental health crises outside of trauma, correct? So I'm just curious if it, we could open it up to more students who are having mental health crises.
We have, all of our schools are equipped with Rotland Mental Health clinicians and case managers and we would actually look to that service for that level of student. So it's really about hierarchy of need and what their proper environment is. But each team would look at students that might be appropriate. But Angela's comment there is, is well-taken. We have to be careful not to over-target students for the, for the program. So that's Angela's point, which I appreciate Angela very much.
Any other questions before we talk about adjournment tonight?
So this would come back to the second meeting of May. Without a presentation, you'd have the presentation, so you would have a longer-term facilitated discussion, the second meeting in May.
Yeah, I would hope that board members would review it, come up with questions. I think we'll probably end up doing some brainstorming while also talking about their questions that we have, so. That's what I would like to see happen. I don't know about the rest of the board. Everybody's nodding their head. Okay, so that's what we will plan on doing. So that, thank you again for everyone's input tonight. I think it's been very helpful and makes us realize how much we have to think about that. and makes us realize how much we have to think about that. So we'll move on to the Superintendent's informational report.
I think I've given it to you.
Oh, good. Excellent. So I was going to dismiss all of the staff that's here if they don't want to stay with us for the rest of the next five minutes of meeting and say thank you all for being here tonight. So.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank all of you.
So she's already given us her superintendent. So actually, our next meeting is set for Wednesday, May 5th on Zoom. Again, hopefully pretty soon we'll actually be able to see each other in person.
The target date is, the August meetings is when we'll come back in person. That's the target date.
It's hard to have a facilities discussion when we're not all together.
We were going to talk about that, Lori, so we can talk about that.
So we'll talk about that a little more. So then I will say goodbye to everybody tonight. If someone wants to make a motion for adjournment, you can do that. And you can leave to agree to leave. All right, sounds good. We'll see you guys later. Thank you, everyone.